This is lock and open and put another item on your duties for tonight. Would you please leave me to that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is modifications to the agenda. Does anyone have any modifications to the agenda they would like to make? Hearing none, we'll move to public comments. We have one individual signed up for a public comment, Mrs. Jane Shaw. Ms. Shaw, the opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a question or comment on an agenda item. The board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. The board strives to make the best decisions for the district in public input in a variety of ways. It is very helpful. The board must accept the civility and decorum of this meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board in democratic process in your comments tonight. Please, as you know, use the microphone, state your name and your comments to the board. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please be factual. Here it is. And do not include statements that are personally disrespectful and condescending to members of the board and staff. If you feel your matter needs to be discussed in more detail, please attend the board's chance to chat. Present your comments to us in writing. Ms. Shaw.
Good evening. I am Jane Shaw, and I live in Leachon. I think I know most of it. First off, I'm actually very glad that we have administrators now working on expired contracts since they simply renewed them. They were getting way too much. And I know I spoke about it at a financial meeting. I understand you've most likely been talking about it because it was on the list of things for closed session. Let me give you a little history because I know we have some new board members who may not know all this stuff. The first I knew about salary spiking is when Dr. Ken Lattie got three years in a row of 20 percent raises, ending up with the fact that he had a pension equal to about what he was getting prior to returning on the new school, tiger. That went all the way to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court found that the citizens have a right to know what's in contracts since we're liable for paying them. Okay? We have some contracts out here. Starting 2001 to 2012, everybody, the teachers, the administrators, most of those contracts, all the teachers did definitely, the administrators that we had hold of, were getting either a 20 percent raise if the last year worked or two 10 percent raises the last two years. One said it's an EPOH, so she knew when the salary spiking started. And I can't count what was really already doing in 1993 when I got elected to a school board. So it goes back at least that far on some of these school boards. We really don't know how far back it goes. The next thing they did is the state passed a law saying you can't get more than 6 percent a year during the last four years of work. So all these school districts changed it to 6 percent for four years in a row. Turn in your stuff, you get it. 2012, our district finally negotiated that we could get rid of that salary spiking. Boy, did that make us happy. What we didn't know is they replaced salary spiking with an end of career compensation, which is a lump sum that doesn't count toward pensions. I thought it was $500 per year worked as long as you worked so many years. Don't recall the exact number of years they had to work. When the 2015 contract came up and they were renewing, and I was sitting in this room, one thing they didn't even mention as they were renewing the contracts is the fact that that $500 per year was changed to $750 per year. Okay? I realized that after I went and actually looked at the contract. Okay? So where I'm going with this is US board members need to see these administrative contracts that are coming up. And I realize that you have the salaries for the bulk of the administrators on this attached to the board packet for tonight, and the senior administrators aren't on there at all. So I assume they're still to be negotiated. The board needs to see the actual contract. They need to know what's on there. All post-employment compensation has to go. All end-of-career salary spikes have to go. This concept of giving teachers extra sick days is their sick bank grows. And the only reason for doing that is so they can pad their pension because sick days can morph into years of service toward pensions. That has to go. You need to be looking at all this stuff. Power allowances, you know, it depends on who it is and how much they're driving. I can see it for some employees, but not for, you know, whatever. Take a look at those contracts, see what's in them. And so my real business here is the fact that the contracts need to be attached when they're being, if there's any, you know, a standard contract, everybody's gonna be the same except they're gonna have a different salary and a different name on it. Fine. But we need to see what the goodies are in those contracts. Because you're not going to get a referendum to pass ever until you start cutting back on all these goodies that are being given to the salaries. And the last point I'd like to make is when it comes up to the teachers' contracts, which is, you know, comes up in 2018, that we need somebody other than just administrators on that administration side of the house. Because when the administrators agree with the teachers to give the teachers benefits, the administrators get them too. Who's representing the taxpayers? Who's representing the students? So I would like to see a board member on that, or perhaps a citizen at large on it. But we need somebody other than the administrators on the citizen's side of that thing so the taxpayers actually have a representative. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. The next item on the agenda, superintendent's report, Dr. Schuler.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. A couple of things just very quickly to get into the agenda. Obviously, there have been some recent developments with the state budget. I'm not going to comment on those now. I'm gonna wait and let Mr. Farley do that as part of his budget presentation because I know that's a part of that. So just the one element to the state budget, if you've read about it, that has not yet been passed is the actual distribution model to schools. So a budget's been passed. That budget calls for an evidence-based distribution model, but the actual legislation around that model is the one piece of legislation that hasn't yet been passed. There are two different versions of that bill out there. Senate Bill 1 has actually passed both the House and the Senate, just hasn't been sent to the governor yet. And then there, I forgot the number on the other bill, but there's another version of the evidence-based model that has not passed through the chambers that's been floated out there. So again, that's just kind of the one last element to the state budget. But absent that, even with a budget and with revenues behind the budget, there's not, there can't be distribution of those funds to schools absent that legislation. So that's kind of the one piece that is still out there. You'll notice I'm shifting topics in the finance committee minutes this evening, that we did talk with the finance committee about lacrosse. That was something that came to the board a few meetings ago under public comment. Dr. Rammer and I have still been working with some representatives from the lacrosse community. What we've been working with them on is a fully parent-funded model that would put lacrosse in place for this coming year when it does officially become an IHSA sport. And so we updated the finance committee on that. Our hope is to get something finalized that we could bring back to the board at your August meeting for consideration. Finance committee was supportive of the concept and the financial parameters under which that could happen. I want to thank all of the board members, and I know Mr. Hamlin would have certainly been with us had he been in walking form for the parade, but it was good to see everybody as we walked behind. Really was a lot of fun and I think a great opportunity to spend some time in the community. And I think something that hopefully is a tradition that we can keep and expand to Warren Villan the day before so that we're represented in both of those community parades. And I think that's it for my report for this week. I know we've got plenty on the agenda, so keep going.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler.
I have a couple of quick questions on that. On the distribution model, the higher education, I mean, you know, yeah, secondary education, covered in either those bills.
That the distribution model is just for K-12. So their higher ed is...
So that's not a pressure point, I'm sorry. In which, you mentioned Senate Bill 1 and then other one. Which of those two gets more money to Chicago versus suburban?
Senate Bill 1.
That's the one. So our desire is the other if it comes to that, is that a fair statement?
Still a little bit of a detail on the other bill. We probably know a little bit more about Senate Bill 1. We've seen more of the numbers and the runs beyond Senate Bill 1. So hard to say that at this point. My assumption would be if less money is going off the top to Chicago, either through, you know, Aubrey Block grants, then that means more money to be distributed elsewhere.
Because it's the same pot.
Yes.
And I just wanted to mention also, as part of the finance committee, we touched on briefly the lacrosse. I think that as we look at the whole fee structure coming in the next year, that I think we look at all sports and try to put them on the heel of funding and parent participation and so on. So that's one of the goals and objectives of that statement, that, you know, this is a parent funding model. It doesn't mean that it will be that way in the future, or maybe every sport's got to be that way. So, you know, I think that was another byproduct of the finance committee. That's it.
Any other questions from board members of Dr. Schuler? If not, we will proceed to the consent agenda. I have to mention tonight that the consent agenda only identifies 13 items. They are as follows. One, acceptance of gifts from S and PTA. Two, acceptance of gifts from Sandberg PTA. Three, acceptance of gifts from Wishbrook PTA. Four, approval of print shop paper bid. Five, approval of zero graphic bond paper bid. Six, approval of single student and small group student transportation services bid. Seven, approval to open previously closed minutes. Eight, approval of the IASB annual dues. Nine, approval of the 2017-18 leader membership dues. Ten, approval of the resolution authorizing transfer of monies from education fund to capital projects fund. Eleven, approval of bills payable and payroll. Twelve, approval of minutes, June 14, 2017, open and close. And approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to February 2016 as allowable by law. And thirteen, approval of personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrator-certified classified and non-union staff. Are there any other board members wanting to move from the consent agenda?
Mr. Roman, I'd like item number 13 moved to action place.
Are there any other items from the consent agenda that a board member would wish they had moved? Hearing none, Dr. Schuler.
Yeah, just one quick comment. In the first three items on the consent agenda, their board will be accepting over $21,000 in gifts from those three PTA groups. So again, continue to be very thankful for the partnership and collaboration of our PTA groups that donate our, form our time and human capital and expertise and even money, but $21,000 is no small amount. So we're grateful for that partnership.
Any questions from board members or staff with respect to consent agenda items?
I did have one relative to, related to item eight. What was the, what were the dues last year for IASB?
Just a second.
Can I ask a question? Anytime you want. Number six, the transportation. I see we're quoting the 1.5 million. Can you explain exactly what that transportation is? And do we pay by mile? Do we pay by trip? Or is it based on a certain distance? Student transportation.
May I ask Lisa Mader to come up? She was put together a bid relative to these services. The majority of it is for homeless and special education services. And it is... Go ahead.
Yes. Majority is for the homeless transportation and also the special ed where there's one student going to outplace facilities is what a lot of it is. The bid was structured so that we asked for base cost per route, which is, they have a minimum plus then a load fee is what they call it, and then also a cost per mile. So that's how we asked it in the bid, and both of our vendors responded that way.
So we're accepting a contract based on some kind of standard rate, and we're not approving a dollar amount, which is budgeting an estimated dollar amount based on this figure?
Correct, yes.
Before you leave, I have a question on that. Just to be clear on what, how much share are we talking about here? Could you be a little more descriptive? Is this a state mandated issue, I guess? I'd like the public to be a little more aware of this site.
As far as the homeless, we are required to transport homeless students. So, and Joanne may be able to address the homeless aspect of it a little better than I can, but if children are deemed homeless, the two districts do share the cost of that child getting to the school where they're going to attend. So some of our homeless costs are paid to other districts that are transporting the child, and then we're also transporting students and then getting half the cost reimbursed of us. So that's the homeless piece. And then as far as the special ed piece, obviously we're required to transport them as well.
The big piece of this is the homeless, is correct?
It's not the biggest chunk of it. I think it was, I think I can run some figures for Bill, and it was about 25 percent of it was homeless. 25 percent, I'm sorry.
Okay, and I understand the whole budget line items of 1.5 million. So we're saying that there's somewhere around 300,000, 400,000 a year to move homeless children to this district mostly, or?
Within our district, yes.
Okay. And if they live literally in a homeless area, for instance, under Whacker Drive, do we, why do we pay for them to come here or whatever school? I'm confused on what the state mandate is on that.
Joanne may, you have to address the homeless.
Yeah, I certainly can. So with any students who are McKinney-Vento eligible, which is homeless, we are required as a school district to make sure that we reduce any barriers to have students attend education. So if students started in our district and became homeless during that time and say they moved to another district, then we would be still able to have that student continue in our district because they would, you would want that consistency. That's the law in most states. So we have situations like that in which students begin in our district and then they become homeless and they live in Naperville, for example, with Aurora. And so we work with the other school district and we share those transportation costs, and that student is then allowed to stay in our district. We do monitor the progress of these students who are McKinney-Vento eligible, and we make sure that we monitor the progress of them and make sure that they're connected with services, and also to make sure that they're either continuing under the eligibility for McKinney-Vento. We also then have students who either live in another district and their family relocates to our district. And again, depending on the distance, the law does say that it should be in which a student can remain in that last attending school. But sometimes those students, if they are from the city of Chicago and their family relocates out here and they know that they're going to be reestablishing themselves in our boundaries, then we do take on those students as that still McKinney-Vento status until they can get established. And so, but we do have students who are as far as Chicago, the city of Chicago and U-Nax. And again, we really do ask the questions that we need to to make sure that we're providing the right kind of supports for students and not just, you know, taking the word for it.
Once the student is deemed homeless and they, this is an annual event, or if the student starts, say, as a freshman for four years or even longer if they're younger, would we continue that process?
So once a student is identified as McKinney-Vento, we are required to have them be tagged McKinney-Vento in our system for up to one year. During that year within District 200, we do two checks. One is initially when they're identified as McKinney-Vento eligible, and then throughout the year, a mid-year check, and ultimately an end-of-the-year check. And so our social workers do that. They're connected with the families or with the students. Families can be homeless up to as many years as possible, believe it or not. There is within the law of McKinney-Vento that there's an 18-month rule, which again is that minimum point in time in which a district can question a family a little further regarding their homeless status. But ultimately, once a, you know, once a family does, is identified as homeless, it's ultimately within that first year, they're automatically tagged. Even if they become on their feet or if they get established and become established and on their feet, they can still be tagged homeless.
Just to give you a hand, the number on IASB was $17,803 last year. So the increase, there's, it's just a little more care over $300.
I have one other question. On the bill list, there was a $750,000 payment to North American Central Schools. What was that? 750,000?
Bussin', I believe. Bussin'.
Or the transportation business, I guess, huh?
That's the parent company, Illinois Central, are the main contractor.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, I ask for a motion of second to approve the consent agenda as presented other than moving item 13 to an action item.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Erickson.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Paulson. Mrs. Hutchinson, please follow.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Gregtry?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes. The consent agenda as modified has been approved. We now move to action items. And the first action item is the approval to post the 2017-18 10 of the budget and set the public hearing on the 2017-18 budget. Dr. Schuler?
I'm gonna hand it right over to Mr. Farley, who's gonna walk the board through the tentative budget presentation tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. Tonight, we're asking Board of Education to post the tentative budget. Our budget is on a cash basis. I'm gonna talk about all funds, which is, we have seven funds in our school district that we use relative to our budget. I will also talk about our operating budget, which is truly everything but debt service and capital projects. So as I go through the presentation, I'll talk about that as well. First, I'd like to run through kind of the budget calendar. I say every year the budget is a year-long process, but we do have some defined timeline dates for the last six months that help us to build our budget each year. Starting back in January 11th, the board authorized us to start preparing the 2017-18 budget. Every year in that committee of the whole meeting, in the second meeting in January, in the whole meeting, we present our budget forecast, and that's our five-year forecast using our forecasting tool through Forecast 5. And May 10th, we talked a lot about budget and talked about some of the items we were referring that the administration brought to the Board of Education relative to planning for the capital spending in a meeting, the Sherman-Durges reset. Last week, the finance committee reviewed, did a brief review of our budget. Tonight, we're asking you again to post the 2017-18 tentative budget. By school code, we have to have the budget on display for a minimum of 30 days prior to holding a public hearing on the budget. That date is August 16th. It'll be here at the School Service Center at 7:00 PM. And then finally, we usually ask the board to approve the budget on the September meeting, the first meeting in September, as the budget is required to be approved by the end of the first quarter, which is September 3rd. The budget will be posted, we put the posting of the public hearing in the Daily Herald that'll run tomorrow. And then we post the budget on public display at all of our libraries, this building, as well as the internet. I want to talk a little bit of history before we get into the actual budget moving forward. And I have a few slides I just want to share with the board relative to where we've been over the last few years here as a district. And first, I'm gonna start with the operational revenues. And again, this is our education, operations and maintenance, transportation, IMRF fund, a working cash fund. These are the operational funds on the revenue side of our required district. And as you can see over the last, going back to 2010, the largest amount of our revenues is the red line. That's the local share, what the local community is paying. The green is state funding, and I'm gonna talk a little bit about that more in a minute. And then the brown at top is federal funding. You'll notice in the next slide, it stands out, it's a little more pronounced, if you go back to 2012, that was the year we got our state construction grant from 2004 from the high school. So that's why the state number is a little bit inflated in that fiscal year. This information is a 10-year look back at state funding, and I know it may be a little hard to read from the, this will be all in one line, but indicates where our state funding has actually been. This information is pulled right from our annual financial report and downloaded into this diagram again in 2012. You can see where the state grant money came in. That was due to us back in 2004 for our high school projects. Took a little time to get here, but we all live in Illinois, so I guess we understand that. And that money has been sitting in operations and maintenance fund and helped to build fund balance that we've used for projects along the way. Next slide now, we're gonna get into is looking back to 2010 again, and this illustrates our overall spending, again, information pulled from our annual financial report. And obviously, as a people business, our largest, largest spend is on salaries. And I think it's very important for the board to take a look at where we were back in 2010 and where that spending has gone over the last seven years. Lower to flat over that time period. So we're spending about as much now, and this again, this is from the 2016 AFR. We don't have the 2017 information for this, this year. But looking back from 2016 to 2010, we are spending the same amount of money on the salaries that we were back in 2010. Again, the rest is benefits, purchase services, supplies and such. But again, I think that's a good point to look at as far as overall spending, as far as salaries go and benefits and things of that nature. It gives you a good illustration of where we've been over the last seven years. Before I jump into the funds, I'm gonna run through some budget highlights. A lot of this, again, is, as Dr. Schuler mentioned, we're still waiting for the state to kind of, for the state to vote or pass a, you know, they passed the Senate Bill 1, but wait for the governor to take some action. There's still talk about the reconvening of the General Assembly to talk about other issues, which could include a tax freeze. We've heard two-year, we've heard four-year, and we've heard forever. So we're still waiting to hear that. As this budget currently sits, we're incorporating the 2.1 percent CPI levy into our budget. That levy will be coming to the board in November. Generally, we do it in November, so we're looking at that. So this budget does include the impact of that levy. If something changes, obviously, we're going to have to adjust. It also includes the impact of the Amazon, impact and distribution that the board approved previously. If you bought Amazon delivered quickly, you should see how quickly they put up buildings because that thing is, it looks like it's almost done from the outside. So that is, again, that is good news for our tax bases that rebellion, obviously, bring this, new growth comes into our district.
Yes, sir. Can I ask a question on that? When we approved that, there was an abatement for two years?
Correct.
So this dollar amount that we've included in our budget is 50 percent of what we would normally, because we have to pay 50 percent back?
Correct.
What's the dollar amount?
$325,000. So it does include the impact as well as the distribution. Tax levy distributions. Every year, all of us go in and pay our taxes in May and August, and the county clerk or the county treasurer, Henry, distributes those funds. How those funds are, you know, it's not an even 50-50 split every year, so every year it kind of changes. We've been under 50 percent in the first payment, which obviously splits two budget years. This year, we received 51 percent, almost 51 percent, which is unusual in the June payment, so we're expecting 49 percent in the September payment, which is the first payment in this fiscal year. And we've adjusted accordingly for the June payment in 2018, which again is part of this budget. The next item is corporate personal property replacement tax. And for those of you that have been on the board for the last couple of years, may recall that the state, the state made a mistake on their... uh, general city, the state made a mistake on their, uh, their distribution of corporate person, personal property replacement tax, how they calculated that dollar money and told everybody you're going to have to pay a refund. So we, in our last year's budget, adjusted accordingly. We reduced it by the amount we thought we were gonna have to pay back as well as a little lower because if they were calculating those too high, we didn't wanna be caught short. Well, we got our normal full allotment from the state. Uh, a bunch of other business managers and I were talking about this. We've talked to other people in the know, and we're not quite sure what happened there. Uh, so for this year, we are, this district, we are putting C P P R T into three different funds, the education, transportation, I M R F fund. We've increased it a little bit, but we have not increased it back to what our normal full allocation has been, which is around two point two or two point three million a year. So we're right around two point two million, or two million this year. Uh, so we're still monitoring that, waiting to see what happens. The state doesn't give you your estimate until August, so we still have to kind of wait to see where that estimate's going to come in, but as, for as of now, they have not recouped what they claim. They always said there's thought that that may never happen. Interest earnings, as, uh, if you read the papers, you know, short-term borrowing rates, uh, interest rates have gone up, so that has resulted in, in increased interest rates from our, for our ability to invest money. So that's a good thing. So as you look across the fund, you'll see some, in some funds that have larger balances, the interest earnings are going up. We also had put in the registration fee increase. That was calculated about thirty-seven thousand dollars under the, uh, the textbook fee, so you'll see that increase in the budget as well. Uh, this is again where it gets a little, uh, interesting as far as state funding. Normally, the state in the last couple of years has not approved the budget, but they've approved that K twelve spending. Now we're kind of the reverse. They've approved the budget, but they don't have a K twelve funding in place, as Dr. Schuler mentioned. So we're kind of in a holding pattern right now as far as state funding goes. We've seen different iterations of the different Senate bills that have been out there as far as what it means to our district. No district is supposed to lose money over what they got the prior year, so we're waiting to kind of see what happens. So, and, and so what we've done for state funding is we've kept everything flat at this point, assuming that in the worst-case scenario, we won't receive anything less than we received in the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year. The funding level for, uh, the funding revenue for the Senate bill one incorporates a lot of the state categorical and, and general state money, but now, uh, transportation is not included in that. Uh, there is talk that they are going to fully, try and fully fund regularized transportation again. We'll wait and see, uh, by fully funding in the states, not that that means about eighty percent. So we're still waiting to hear what's going to happen there. That's been promised in the past. Our last year's budget, we, our funding levels were decreased after we set the budget, so we're waiting to see what happens there. Reminder, we used to get about two, over two, almost two million dollars in regularized transportation funding. This past year, we, we got two hundred thousand. So we're hopeful that that will, uh, that funding comes through, but again, it's something we hear, uh, hear from time to time, it doesn't happen. Federal funding, uh, that's the last of the three, uh, main sources of our revenue. Um, we're keeping most of those flat tight, except with the exception of Title, which did go down this year a little, or excuse me, I D A, which did go down a little bit this year. Medicaid was actually up. And Medicaid's another one that's kind of on our watch list because a lot of the talk in Washington relative to the repeal and replace of the healthcare bill does take it, have an impact on Medicaid, which would have an impact on school districts. So we're still kind of waiting to hear what happens there.
And that's one point two million, if I recall? Remember correctly that we budgeted for Medicaid?
Oh, yeah, one point two million. We actually got more than that, um, this year. The credit to Dr. Penau, listen to her, because they gotta fill out a lot of paperwork to get those reimbursements. Finally, a lot of revenue, we did, uh, we've talked to the board previously about for capital work, we are transferring that three hundred and ninety thousand dollars that we received from Carol Street this year for their T I V, uh, funding. Uh, we are transferring that over to capital projects or the education fund. Uh, that's going to help with some, with, uh, one of the Edison alternate group projects and with, uh, the flooring, uh, at the Earth lighting center. Jim?
Yeah, a couple of questions. The, uh, that Amazon item that Brad asked about, the, um, that levy that we get every year will not be three or four hundred thousand, whatever the number was. It'll be half of that, right?
Correct.
Because we only get half in the year.
Half in the budget.
Right. And, and the same issue with the first item, the, the tax levy, the two point one, that's really a blend of the prior years, uh, which was what, C P I?
Point seven.
So there's actually half of the levies, point seven, and the other half is two point one.
Correct.
Assuming that we, we levy that. Or have we done that already?
We haven't, we'll levy that in November.
Okay.
That's a good point, because if, if the tax freeze does go into a, into effect, if a tax freeze were to go into effect, that's only gonna impact one payment in our fiscal year. It's not going to be a full, full impact of, of the tax freeze. And that, that tax freeze over time does compound, would be a compounding factor. That would, uh, obviously, uh, we would have to address, but it's, you're correct.
One of two payments.
One of two payments.
Yeah. I mean, it's really, it's a big number.
Yeah.
So when we pass this budget with that point seven, point two, that again assumes that we're gonna be levying, uh, to cover that two point one increase.
Correct.
Which we may or may not do in November.
Right.
Okay, that's, but if we don't, then this balanced budget goes out of, out of mix, is that a fair statement?
Yes. Every one percent is about a name of three for the district, so you're talking about two point six, so then you gotta, you know, you gotta.
Half your.
You gotta back out half of that, so.
Yeah. Okay, so this is predicated under that assumption.
Correct.
And the, the contract, your teachers is, is already fixed in this budget. I know we'll talk about it in a minute, but, and that's already got whatever increases in that.
Correct.
Okay, what do we get Medicaid for? Why, why do we, what is, what is the, what do we claim it for? What, what condition exists?
Other grand, talk to that.
So, um, I kind of explain Medicaid as, uh, one way in which, uh, if we were like a doctor's office and parents were to put their insurance through for medical care, similar thing happens with regards to students who, um, receive speech services, um, physical therapy, occupational therapy, um, and then also our teachers can also claim for students too. And it's again, only students who are Medicaid eligible, on which we can claim, and, um, it's basically for the school-based services. So, um, because we're providing that medical care more or less for these students, it's kind of like we are the doctor's office, and we're actually able to, um, get reimbursed for the services in which we provide for students. Primarily, any of the, um, um, drawing a blank on my, my, the staff, you know, who, again, it could be, um, speech, O T, P T, um, nursing, you know, for the health services is a big chunk of what we get. Um, we also do, um, get reimbursed for any psychological evaluations, or psychologists when they're seeing students and evaluating students. So there's just different tiers of types of supports and services on which we can, um, collect.
And that's on, on children who are Medicareed eligible? In other words, income-based eligible?
Correct.
Okay. So if we have a, uh, and what, thirty percent of our students are that? Is that kind of a ballpark?
Twenty, I think it's twenty-six.
Twenty, whatever. Whatever. So on those students that have those services, we can make a claim on Medicaid. That's Medicaid.
Medicaid.
Medicaid, I'm sorry. See how I'm thinking?
And related services was the word I was looking for, the term I was looking for. So we also can claim for students with, um, who are on transportation. Our, when we, you know, have students who are transported by us, um, we claim for transportation as well. And so that too has been in a way in which we've been able to capture some of that money.
And that again is part of the federal program that may be cut based on the new healthcare? Is that?
Repeal and replace, yes.
Would we not have to provide those services now?
Doesn't work that way.
I don't understand.
Bill, I'm looking at, on the, um, two seventeen eighteen budget, I see, um, C P P R T at one point three million, and you mentioned two million. Uh, what's that disconnect for me?
Uh, if you look, uh, we also have money budgeted in the transportation fund and the I M R F fund. Uh, those two funds also have a C P P R T allocation in them. Looking over to expenditures, uh, this budget includes, uh, the teachers, as, as Mr. Matheson mentioned, we add the teachers, uh, into a final year of their contract increase built into it, as well as classified staff, which was recently negotiated. Uh, we carry, uh, the percentages that we used in the model back in January as far as administrators and non-union. Uh, we also have, uh, deferred hiring of two administrators, which is a reduction of around a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars in salary that, uh, were coming out of the curriculum department. Uh, benefits, this is our first full year on, in the N I H pool, so there'd be a lot more predictability, and, uh, we talked to the Finance Committee a little bit about that, that we're looking at enrollment, uh, just had open enrollment on that. Another item that's, uh, down in Springfield that we're keeping an eye on is, is the T R S Fed. Again, this, uh, any, uh, any certified staff that we have on the federal grant, uh, we are paying, you know, we have to, uh, pay a forty-four point six-one percent, uh, T R S fee on, on each of their salaries. So it's a hundred thousand dollar employee, it's forty-four thousand six hundred and ten dollars that has to come out of that grant. And these are federal grants that are designed to help children with special, you know, with needs, reading and, and other programs, and we're paying this huge excise tax. This tax, normally, this T R S fee or, uh, T R S rate would be about six percent, I believe. Um, the state has made multiple attempts, legislators, to reduce it back to the six percent amount. Uh, this is all related to the pension catch-up, is, or the, or the money that is owed on the pensions, uh, and that's why it's gone up over time. Last year, it had been approved, but when the K twelve budget bill was approved, Speaker Madigan slipped it back in there. Uh, the fee we just paid for this year was thirty-eight percent, I believe.
Yes.
A little over thirty-eight percent. It's going up to forty-four point six-one percent. So for Faith and Joanne, any certified staff they put on a federal grant, they've got to account for up almost forty-five percent of their salaries, uh, just to pay the T R S Fed.
So that would be like Title One, teachers, correct?
Correct. Title One, Title Two.
I need the special ed.
No.
I mean, I know you don't have any, but.
Right.
So. Uh, moving on to, uh, curriculum, uh, we defer the driver ed simulators, that's part of that five hundred and twenty-five thousand of overall deferral we, uh, the board discussed and we approved. Uh, we do have textbooks, uh, that we are approving, uh, that are going to be purchased in biology, foreign language, history, P E and PACE. Uh, the travel allotment that's in there is per board policy. Uh, one bit of good news is on the tuition, uh, the outplace tuition. We did see that number come in lower this year, lower than budgeted. It was higher than last year, but, uh, not at the increases we've been seeing in the budgets that came from Joanne's department was lower than last, uh, last year's budget, so that's a bit of good news is because that, uh, cost was going up, and I know Joanne's department does everything they can to try and not outplay students, and it, uh, and so it's good to see that number, uh, hitting the brakes, as it were.
Roughly, what is that number? That's a big number, right?
Uh, it's about seven, um, just almost, special ed's probably six point seven million. I think, uh, we, tuition also includes T C D students, so that's about six hundred and sixty thousand. So the overall budget, I think, in, in this budget is about seven point, uh, four million, roughly, so six hundred thousand in that T C D.
It's only about how many students do we have left?
For the past couple of years, it's been about a hundred and twenty.
Our technology budget, uh, includes copiers, network, storage, Chromebook refresh, and again, we defer two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, uh, for the S I S implementation, so that's another deferred item that we, uh, have pulled out of this year's budget. All of our outsourced contracts, the board's previously approved those leading up to the budget, and the, uh, two of those moved at C P I, so they went up by, uh, the C P I, and then the transportation budget was a three-year contract, and that's going up two point nine percent. I will say, I know we, we've talked about the trade, what happened with the transportation bit and how it went up significantly. It has been probably the best year of transportation in my twenty-two years in the school district, so at least we're getting what we're paying for, we're not, uh, seeing that, and hopefully the state reimbursement will, uh, go up and, and be fully funded. I, I can tell you, we, a lot of school districts saw double-digit percentage increases as the bus companies had to go out and try and attract drivers with salary, and that, so, uh, so we're entering our second year in that, but I would, in second year of that contract, but I wouldn't say it's been one of the best years for transportation.
So, Bill, one more question on that, special ed tuition. So that, just to sit some quick, man, that's like fifty-six thousand dollars per student for outplace tuition versus what we, I mean, the numbers you see cross per student, it's like twelve thousand or something like that, just to compare.
Mm-hmm.
It's a huge premium we have to pay.
Bill, on transportation, so the state pays about forty percent, but we're mandated to provide that transportation to anybody that's a mile, mile and a half, special ed or hazardous, yeah.
Serious safety hazard or homelessness, that's right. And that number is flipped over time. And again, the more local revenue and, and as, uh, this year, we had to put generals, more general, so we put general state aid into that transportation budget, so the general state aid can be used anywhere. However, it's generally, just not using the education fund. We're putting in a transportation, so we're, you know, all the money that, as that has flipped over, we have to use local dollars or general state dollars that are normally meant for the classroom, transport students because the state's not paying what they say they should be paying.
The transportation, I was just talking about, the, that big bump we had last year, the, this year's budget is one of those leveled?
In transportation?
Yeah.
I think we're going up about three percent, a little bit three percent.
Or last year was like ten or fifteen percent?
Yeah, it was significant. And that was after video. Um, O and N utility, we had a great year, electric and gas, kudos to J R and Colin and their department. Uh, we, uh, so we've been able, and I think we mentioned at the meeting, we were able to back down, uh, those numbers as well. Phone has stayed pretty flat, and again, if you live in town, you don't own any of the towns, well, at least we, and water bills have gone up significantly, and we see that. We're not immune to that, so we're, uh, water bills have gone up, uh, over time as the rates have gone up as well. Um, I M R F, uh, that's our, our fund, I M R F Social Security Fund. Yeah, I M R F, uh, each year gives us a, uh, estimate of what our rate will be. Currently, our, our, uh, board contribution's ten point nine percent. They're estimating eleven point oh four. That's done on an actuarial basis by I M R F. That begins in January, uh, so that, uh, rate will increase slightly. And then finally, uh, capital projects, the board previously approved the summer work, the roofing projects at Edison and Weasbrooke, as well as the flooring at Jefferson. Just as another side note, the roofing projects are going very well. It was a good summer to start for roofing projects, and, uh, they've been going, uh, very fast, getting a lot of the work done in the roofs, and I think J R was, uh, came in here pretty sweaty on Tuesday after he'd gotten off the roof, walking, but, uh, things are going really well on those sort of projects. So, uh, again, those are entire re-roofs of Edison Middle School and Weasbrooke Elementary School. And the flooring's gonna start here as soon as, I think, Yelzky's done tomorrow.
As I recall, we, we have, over the last number of years, approved contracts with, I think it's performance services?
Mm-hmm.
And, and is it not the intent as we make those expenditures that are, you're, the buck should go down?
Correct.
Okay, and we're seeing that, yeah?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. And then the other one, when I look at that chart on expenditures, I just wanna look at that in, we're saying that from two thousand ten, I believe, was the first year?
Correct.
Through two thousand sixteen, so what is that?
Uh, I don't know.
Seven years? Basically, we're saying that the salaries, and again, this is all salaries, teachers, educator, I mean, uh, administrations, have been basically flat over those ten years, is that?
Over the seven years.
Oh, seven years, I'm sorry.
Yes. And this information's pulled directly from our annual financial reports.
How does that happen? Can you explain that? Because, you know, I heard about bumps and penalties and, and things today, uh, and, you know, some of those may fall in the benefit areas or whatever, but, you know, the raw salary number, and I, I'll, I'll kind of have another question about benefits in a second, but those raw salary numbers have stayed basically constant for the last seven years, is that?
That's right.
Now, I know in one year, we had a number, a large number of retirees, and that, so there was a drop in, you know, some high-level salaries that dropped lower. But that was one year.
And that's really not reflected. I believe that was last, last year, so we wouldn't feel the impact of that until this year.
Which is not on this chart.
Which is not on this chart.
Okay. Can, tell me how that all works then? So if we're giving raises or having bumps and things like that, I mean, how's, how's that happen?
I think current contracts, even back early on, back in 2010, you saw it went down. There were, it can happen through staffing reductions, attrition. Again, I think the big thing is really just, you know, the board being mindful of approving proven contracts. So we've, we've been at that, you know, pretty, like I said, pretty flat over the last seven years, and I think that's a main contributor to it.
So every year, when we're talking about CPI, which most of these contracts have been over that, and we're looking at compounding CPI costs, we're staying almost in raw dollars the same?
Correct.
That's interesting. And then the second one, just on the benefit costs, what's in benefits, number one, and then why is there a blip in 2014, I guess that is?
Benefit costs are all the medical, dental, those type of costs. It's also the TRS benefits that the district has to, has to pay. Our portion of TRS benefits that we have to pay directly to the system. So the blip in 14 was when we had a pretty significant bad health year, as it were, and claims were very, went very high, and so that was, that was why we had that blip in that year.
And then 2016 was the transition from the self-insured program to the co-op program, I guess, is the proper term, is that?
Correct, yeah.
So we had some double funding in there, in effect, that would wash out ultimately. But so, just to put that in perspective again, over the last seven years, when my health insurance cost as an individual and employer has probably gone up on the average of 10% or better every year, the cost of the district here over this last seven years is basically the same, is that?
No.
And that's the biggest chunk of that benefit cost, isn't it?
Correct.
All right. So I'm a little concerned about the criticism we get at times about that, because it seems like we're controlling a lot of that, if I'm not being correct.
We make every effort.
But I do want to comment on, on what you just said. So we had retirees that left out, the opportunity there was $7 million, thereabouts, round number, because of their departure, and we backfilled with people with much lower salaries. But then we have almost 3% increase on the current contract, so that just wipes it out. So therefore, it becomes flat. So I think we need to be very mindful about the mathematics here, that's what's going on, if you will. I mean, it's flat, there's no question, but the fact of the matter is, there was a $4 million gap there that has now been offset by increases to the current salary.
But then, that's not a little secret on this.
I understand that, you're saying.
But attrition is a factor. You're absolutely right, Jim. And I think it's also worth mentioning, I think Dr. Rammer's presented in part of this HR, and the district does hold a very high retention rate of our staff as well. So we don't have, our turnover is really retirees. I don't think we have a, you know, we don't see a lot of staff turning over each year and maybe have been here a while and maybe bigger salaries, so it's just worth noting. I'm going to move through the funds relatively quickly and just go through revenues and expenditures on your side. Education fund, obviously our biggest fund, this is where we pay the majority of salaries, benefits, all of our costs. So about 84% of that on the revenue side comes from local sources, about 10% or 14 million is state, and then 6% comes from federal, and we talked about some of those federal programs today. So overall, the increase is about 1.63% in revenues. On the expenditure side, as mentioned, salaries and benefits makes up about 120 million of our overall education fund budget, with $7 million being in purchase services. You're going to see across here, we've decreased, again, as we've, as we went through the deferral of some items, we also had to decrease some of our budget line items in these areas to try and, again, hit that target for our capital spending. We've decreased supplies by 4.8% down to 3.8 million. Capital outlay is a decrease of 1.7. Again, this is capital outlay for educational purposes, not operational. And then our dues and fees decreased as well, and I mentioned that the tuition decreased over last year's budget. So that's total expenditures of 139 million. That represents a 1.8% increase over last year's budget. Moving to the operations and maintenance fund, 97% of that comes from local sources. We do have, we have moved in some, we have moved in some general state aid money into the operations and maintenance fund as well to support the capital projects, as well as we still are out there looking for grants all the time. We've received in a lot of the grant money that had been lagging behind from the state in this past fiscal year, so that was good news. We're holding 50,000 there, so that's an 11.6, 0.2% increase in revenue over the prior year.
Can I ask a specific question on that?
Sure.
I get all my questions out during the presentation. So O and M fund revenue, there's three line items that are about $600,000 more than last year. Rentals, other local and state, can you describe what comes?
Sure. Rentals, we, rentals is what it is. It's rental of our property. We have rent to churches, other, other groups rent our space, and Colin Wilkie and John's department does an excellent job of doing that. We've received about $200,000 in revenue this year for that, for those rentals, and have a lot of those locked in, and so those, that's what rental is. We also, go ahead.
Other local.
Okay.
Other local and state?
On the state, on the state side is, again, $400,000 for general state aid and $50,000 from potential grant money. So we've had to move over some general state aid, and I mentioned that, that as well. And then, the other, what was the other one you asked about?
Other, other local went from $500 to 392,000.
It's a TIF, isn't it?
Oh, true. 390,000, yeah, that's the...
That's cross street.
Wait, let me, where are you at? Are you on?
O and M fund revenue. Within the local revenue side, there's a line item called other local, 382,000 and change. Yeah, this is what I turned up other day.
Yeah. Page seven. Page seven. Well, I'm sorry, that's the total page. I was looking at the, the detailed page. The other local is, that's the interest income, that's the rentals, there's rentals somewhere in here, sorry. So the 250,000, 1930, is that what you're talking about?
Well, what's the 250? That's the contribution from?
Oh, that, I'm sorry, that's developer donation monies that we have coming due to us for developers. We can use that in the operations and maintenance fund for, for projects. So 250,000 is coming from Wheaton and, I believe, Warrenville. So that's, that's developer donation fees.
That's a buildup of nine years that are now access. So that's not an ongoing revenue, it's a kind of a one-time draw against the monies that accumulate over time.
Correct. And then the other money is the just refund from prior year expenditures. Sorry, I was looking at pages. I figured that out. Okay, moving over to the expenditure side, 3.2 million in salaries. We did have some employees that left the district, retired. As the board is aware, through our, going back to 2000, we outsource the majority of our custodial services. So as employees retire, we, we replace them with our contracted service. So we reduce the salary there, but we also have to increase it in the purchase services because we're paying more to the contracted company. Obviously, there is a savings there by outsourcing that service and not providing it in-house. Just as a reminder, we do have, we do have, still have some of our employees at Hubble and the two high schools. We do not outsource our district maintenance or high school maintenance or high school leadership. So as, as those folks have retired over time, we've replaced them with our contracted services. Purchase services is just over $4 million, which is a slight decrease. Supplies and utilities decreased as well. I mentioned that, that gas and electric have come down, we reduced those in the budget. And then capital outlay is obviously a large increase as we've increased the amount to cover the costs associated with the reset number on Sure and Durges.
Bill, on that figure, I noticed that line item 522 on building improvement is set aside 2.45 billion. That's included in 2.78.
Correct.
Is the extra 350,000 the TIF money?
That's the 390,000 that we approved transferred today going from the edge of the capital project.
That makes up the difference.
Yes.
And I apologize for this, if I, on top of things. Back on revenue, I noticed that in line item 1112, prior year tax, there was a decrease from what we received in prior years, but in the current year, a major increase under line item 1111. Is that because, when you started out, you mentioned that we received an extra amount, I mean, an unexpected amount?
Yes, yeah, the percentage of the breakout of the, over was, was different. So, and actually, we've moved, we've had to move more tax money into the capital renewal fund, which is a sub-fund of O and M. So if you look at page 10, you'll see that we bumped up, we bumped up the revenue, tax revenue in the capital renewal, which is again, a sub-fund of O and M to, to help cover some of those costs as well.
Has there been any explanation given to you as to why we received this unexpected windfall, but unexpected shortfall for?
Well, yeah, it's not, it's not necessarily a windfall, it's just how, how and when we receive the money. Like, I think we talked about the finance payment last year, we got 49.3% in the June payment. This year, we got 50.6. It just, it's just how the treasurer distributes the money and when the money comes into the, into there. So that's, it always fluctuates a little bit. In perfect world, it'd be 50/50, it'd be like easy, but it does fluctuate some degree.
Some of that is just people paying the whole tax bill in one shot. You know, there's no interest rate and so on. I, I know a lot of people did that, I did it myself, and a lot of people have done that just so they don't have to ask for it. It's three months of no interest payments.
So the overall budget then, in the fund, operations and maintenance funds, 13.8 million dollars, which is an 11.6% increase, again, tied to that capital renewal, or increase in that capital spending. Debt services, 20 million, a little over 20 million revenue, that's all local funds, about 19.8. And expenditures, this is the payment of principal and interest on bonds and capital lease for performance contracting. We are not anticipating any refinancing, if the board probably recalls. We set up a few years ago through passing a resolution that we would refinance our debt over the next five years, but we had, we did two years in a row, we have a year off, this is our year off. In talking to our financial advisors, the PMA, this is not a really good time to be in the bond market, especially with the state of Illinois being, having their issues and that the bond market isn't very favorable right now. So even any discussion of an advance refund is probably not appropriate or prudent at this time. But we'll continue to monitor that moving forward into, into next year, because we have another one coming up next. Transportation, as this is described, we mentioned earlier, 60% of this funding is coming from local sources, about 5.7 million, about 3.8 million comes from state sources of total revenues of 9.5 million, is just over a 3%, 3% increase over the prior year budget. On the expenditure side, the biggest line item again is the purchase services, that's where we're paying the vendor. We did see a little spike up in gas escalator prices, so we did increase that. It had come way down with gas, so we're kind of waiting to see what happens there. We had reduced it last year and it came in a little higher, so we did bump that back up a little bit, and hopeful that gas stays relatively low. And it's a 3.4% increase as well over last year on the expenditure side as well. Moving over to IMRF, we have revenues of 3.9 million, that's all local, includes the CTPRT we mentioned earlier, Mr. Gavion asked about, it's a 1.9% increase, and expenditures of about 3.8 million, which is a 1.3% beat percent increase over last year's budget. Again, this is the fund that pays the, it's the district pension portion for IMRF and Social Security that we pay on our non-certified staff. And then the capital projects, we've mentioned the $390,000 transfer from the education fund this year, that the board just approved denied, and we have expenditures tied to roof work at Edison. It was an alternative to get that entire roof done at Edison, as well as at Jefferson. And finally, our working cash fund, this is probably the most prevalent change in, as far as revenues go, as far as a percentage, we're doubling it because we've seen interest rates go up, and as I mentioned, so we bumped that up as we invest those funds. We're hopeful that the state will make their final payments to us so we can get more cash in the bank to invest, but we're obviously waiting to see what's going to happen now. So looking at all funds, this is every fund of the district, all seven of the ones we've talked about tonight. You can see that the local share amounts to about 160 million, with 18 million from state and about 8 million from federal, for total revenues of about 186 million for all funds. By source, you can see about 86% of it comes from local sources, that's property taxes and other local, and you've got general state aid, other state funds, which is a categorical, about 4% on, on the federal side.
Bill, clarification on the revenue, the previous one?
I'm sorry?
The 160 million local, that includes our debt service payment?
Yes.
So this number is not our operating budget?
That is correct.
It's the operating plus debt service.
This includes the numbers associated with the debt service, correct?
And that was 20...
Twenty, just over 20 million. So looking at, again, as a percentage, you can see the largest share comes from our local, with state being 10%, federal 4%. When I get into the operating funds, these percentages obviously change. So as you look at the operating fund, there's the quick math, Mr. Paulson, we're down to about 140 local for our operating funds. This is again, the education fund, the operations and maintenance fund, the transportation fund, the IMRF fund, and our working cash fund. So that accounts for about 166 million, of which 84% is property taxes and other local, 4% general state aid, other state is 7, which is categorical, is about 5% federal. Looking at expenditures for all funds, we have expenditures of 186 million, and this breaks out exactly where the funds are spent. Looking at how we, how that's expended on all funds, about 60% of that is salaries and benefits, our largest portion. And again, those percentages change when we, when we back out the bond and interest fund, debt services. You can see 11% is purchase services, 4% supplies, 2% capital, and 15% is other. And then when you back into the operating, there you can see that total expenditures are 166, almost 166.5 million, with salaries and benefits being the largest portion of that. Again, this does not include the bond and interest fund. So as a, again, as a percentage, you can see when you back out the bond and interest, it's about 76% of it is benefits and salaries, 13% purchase services, supplies, capital, and then other objects. So all funds, as you look at it, when you take all, when you take those totals and put them together, you can see our revenues are anticipated for all funds to be 186.9, our expenditures of 186.7. So we have an operating balance right now of about $174,000 for all funds. And you can see how that's allocated by fund, about 75% of that goes to the education fund, 7% O and M, 11 debt service, 5% transportation, 2 to IMRF with capital projects and working cash being somewhat neutral. Expenditure allocation by all funds, you can see it's about, again, because the budget's more or less balanced, the percentages stay pretty much the same for all of the different funds of the district's budget. So getting to the operating budget, I think this is where you were going, Mr. Paulson, our, our total operating budget does not include our debt services or capital projects fund. We currently have revenues anticipated of about 166.6 million, expenditures of 166.4. So right now, we have an operating balance of around $155,000. As that compared to last year, we're up about 2.5% in operating revenue, about 2.6% in operating expenditures.
If we did the calculation on the 25% fund balance, what would that number be approximately? The policy. Oh, there it is, 41.6. Does that sound right?
That sounds all right.
So therefore, we have, when I, when I take this total fund balance, I have to back out bond and interest.
Yes. The, that's, I should mention, that's all operating revenues, if you recall, per our policy and how it is being calculated, they back out IMRF. So you'd have, it's probably a little bit lower overall, because they don't use the, they don't use the operation or IMRF fund unless it's a negative fund balance.
Okay, so we have about $40 million then in fund balance, and when I back off the bond and interest out of, out of this projected number on page 22, we're at 48 million. So we have about $7, $8 million of excess, not excess, but above our policy, which is available to be potentially used in some way for building fixes or whatever we elect to do.
Correct, correct. We're about, we finished last year on 29.7%. So obviously, that number will change every year as the revenue changes.
And that somewhat depends also whether we receive some of the state aid, Mr. Paulson?
That's correct as well.
We, we received all of our GSA, but not all of the...
That's correct. We've received, general state aid is one thing through all of the turmoil at the state level that is going to be a constant. We still are owed the third quarter, which is, would be the March payment, and the fourth quarter, which would be the June payment, categorical payments. For the most part, it's about $5.6 million. We're still waiting to see what the title, or the, excuse me, the EL... We're still waiting to see what the title, or the, excuse me, the EL, or the?
Title III.
Title, and we have the bilingual money, bilingual, we're waiting to hear what that fourth quarter, we haven't allocated it yet or settled that dollar amount, so we couldn't raise it anymore.
So we got one of the four recently?
We did, we got, we received it in June, before the end of the fiscal year, in the second quarter, which was due in December.
Since our last board meeting, we had only gotten one of four, so we did get one.
Correct. And on a cash basis, and on a accrual basis, for that matter, we've received two, because we had that one, the fourth quarter that was due in July, June of sixteen, that we received in December, and January of sixteen, seventeen.
So now we got three?
We technically have gotten three, correct. And we budgeted four.
So when we, when I do the reserve calculation, I also have to back out the balances from the same funds I back out the revenue from?
Correct.
Got it, okay, thanks.
Just to put it in perspective again, we're looking at basically break even budget, so if there were a property tax freeze, which I don't know if it's on the table or not right now, we would be, if we, we have what, about two million, is that a fair statement in this budget that address, no, no, it's only half of that, about a million three or whatever of budgeted money that would be potentially subject to the freeze, not numbered, because only half of it coming in this fiscal year.
Correct.
So that would put us a million in the hole, or a million three in the hole.
Without knowing what the Senate, if Senate Bill, assuming Senate Bill one or some variation passes, it at least guarantees a break even, and in most of the iterations I've seen, we actually did money, so I, you know, we'd have to wait and see how that offsets any tax freeze for this budget.
What are we doing at the property tax freeze? I mean, it doesn't mean much to what we do anyway, but generally, but?
Yeah, I've not heard much on it recently, it's been pretty quiet on that front.
One, just a comment, not a question, but we're going to talk a lot about, we have been talking a lot about facilities and funding capital repairs, so we've got about two point eight million dollars in this budget, which is about one point seven, seven percent of the total budget. Just as a comparison, Naperville, two oh three, is about two point three percent of their total budget goes to facilities, so we're about a million dollars off from them. So they spend six million on a two hundred and sixty-six million dollar budget. So we're not that, excuse me, we're not that far off compared.
But next year, we're looking at, next year, we're looking at increasing not eighteen, but nineteen, this year nineteen, we're looking at moving that two seven up to seven million plus, so, I mean, that's where the hit, the herd is.
Right, I mean, if you compare that number to Naperville, we'd be way over their percentage of their budget. That's just one data point.
Any further questions or comments? Mr. Harley, Dr. Schuler?
Hearing none. I ask for a motion to approve the posting of the two thousand seventeen eighteen ten of the budget and set the public hearing on the two thousand seventeen eighteen budget as presented. So moved. Moved by Mr. Matheson?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Craftry, Mrs. Hutchison, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Craftry?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Berman?
Yes. The motion to post the two thousand seventeen eighteen ten of the budget and set the public hearing is passed. The next action item is approval to renew the agreement with the YMCA state and sound program. Dr. Schuler?
So just by way of reminder to the board, we run our own before and after school care program at eleven of our thirteen elementary buildings. Monopolous, remind you the history, how many years ago did we shift the two buildings over to?
Two.
Two years ago?
Two years.
To the YMCA program. Did that at the time based on concern that those two buildings were not able to run a break even program, before and after school, is never intended to be a revenue generating program, but it certainly was intended to have fees that cover the cost of making that service available to parents at our buildings, so this evening we're bringing the renewal of the YMCA program for those two buildings to you. I do want to note that as we've watched those programs recover over the last couple of years, as well as just the general health of the before and after school program, I think we're in a position to reevaluate that before this contract would potentially come to the board at this time next year. So we are in the fall, going to look at the potential of bringing those two programs in-house. I think when this decision was made initially, it was right before I came into the, to the district, and I think the thought process at the time was we may potentially look to move all programs at that, that direction, and fiscally, that program is healthy. Right now, we have a little more flexibility as we deliver the service, as well as the way that we handle billing of that service, and we've received some of those questions from parents at those buildings, and so just based on that analysis, our recommendation is you approve this contract this, this evening, that will give us ample time to study that and provide notice if in fact we do choose to recommend to bring that program back in house the following year.
Any questions or comments? For Dr. Schuler? Hearing none, I ask for a motion of second to approve the agreement with the YMCA state and sound program as presented. So moved. Moved by Mr. Paulson?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Erickson. Mrs. Hutchison, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mrs. Craftry?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Berman?
Yes. The motion to approve the agreement with the YMCA state and sound program as presented is passed. The third action item was moved from the consent agenda, and it pertains to the approval of personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, leave of absence, administrative, certified, classified, non-uni staff. Dr. Schuler?
And just one additional comment that I'll make on the personnel report. The board will note that the top of sections, section one of the personnel report actually states now approval of pay rates, so just point of clarification, there are no administrative contracts on the personnel report. All of those salaries or pay rates are in fact support staff, those are the non-represented support staff positions, there are no administrative positions on this, this personnel report. Those positions, those salaries or pay rates for those positions reflect a one point five percent salary increase, which is consistent with the increase that our support staff are getting across the district.
Questions or comments of Dr. Schuler?
Well, since I asked to move it, I'll just make a couple of comments. First of all, as we begin this process of exploring opportunities to garner some additional funds for building maintenance or projects that we have, I just take, I think we just have to take a hard look at all the salaries as we move forward. We've got the, tonight on the personnel report is asking us to approve a one point five percent increase on about two point one million dollars in salaries, which is for about forty people. And so I asked to move that over only because I believe this is a beginning step in many things, the next step being the administrators' contracts, and then the next step being the teachers' contracts. And so I just felt that tonight, I was a little bit of disconnect, because, you know, we, two meetings ago, this board approved an increase in fees, and those fees, if this were approved, will be wiped out. So we continually are in neutral. We raise fees and generate revenue, and then we increase fees or salaries that offset that revenue. And so I just, you know, for me, this is a process that we have to continue to explore and refine, and so that's really the reason why I asked to have this put on the agenda from an action item as opposed to a consent agenda, because we are voting tonight on increasing two point one million dollars of salaries at one point five percent.
So just to clarify, we're not increasing two point one million, we're increasing one point five, thirty-one thousand dollars.
Just in response to that, wherever you are, I've been on the board, the non-exempt staff pay increases have, your pay increases we've given, you can see A, according to CEA, CEA collective, pardon me, you're part of the support staff, part of the support staff that exists throughout the district. I oppose to Dr. Schuler that, beginning early next year, the HR policy committee worked with Dr. Schuler in reviewing salaries, including for the non-exempt staff. And that would give the non-exempt staff a heads up if we're going to be making some changes if we start early enough next year. And it would address next year when we need to make, address the issues that the Sherman Durges policy will present to us. So my position is that we approve the proposal to raise the exempt, the non-exempt salary step as proposed by Dr. Schuler, and then make it a process, and the HR policy committee also talked to Dr. Schuler in reviewing the whole panel, and we'll talk salaries and benefits of the non-exempt staff.
Can someone explain to you, I'm curious as to why they're exempted? How did that come about, that this group is exempted, not considered as a part of support? Or are you strange?
Couple of different, well, they're not administrative positions because they're on supervisory responsibility that would draw to that. There are a couple of reasons why a position by law may be exempt, it's other access to specific information that would be inappropriate for them to have access to and then be a part of the bargaining unit, and/or the fact that they do in fact have a supervisory responsibility that again, would make it be inappropriate to be a part of that. In some cases, they're just positions that have not been part of bargaining.
And a lot of these EASP directors, we just talked about, technology staff which hasn't grown in the last couple of years, et cetera.
Correct.
Maybe some administrative assistance.
So even with all the technology we've added, we have added people to support that?
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. I ask for a motion of second to approve as presented the personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, leave of absence of, I would say administrative, certified, classified, non-uni staff included, ten thousand for the non-exempt staff. Moved by Mr. Paulson?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Craftry. Mrs. Hutchison, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Craftry?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
No. No.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
I'm going to vote no as well.
Mr. Berman?
Yes. The motion to approve the personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, leave of absence, administrative, certified, classified, non-uni staff, and the proposal for the compensation for the non-exempt staff is approved. We now move to oral reports, the facility plan update, for Dr. Schuler.
And so, Mr. Harley's going to provide this update, again, as our facilities committee has continued to work moving forward around the redefined facility priorities, who wanted to make it a standing agenda, and to give the full board an update on where they're at. So I think there are two things that Mr. Harley's going to update you on this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. Tonight, we review some items that the facilities committee, as well as the finance committee reviewed at the recent meetings. The first document, and the board should have copies of the PowerPoint in their, it's the shortest one I'll probably ever do, in your, in your green folder. First item is, first item is relative to our capital funding, so the, what we decided to do was to pair up the capital funding item, and the board will have in their packet a document that looks like this, which is the background for that capital funding, that this is the document that?
It's a legal sized piece of paper. Look at that one.
That mine is old, sorry. That's the background, and what that information includes is all of the capital projects that were associated within the recent referendum relative to category one, category two, and category, and some category three, or condition one, condition two, condition three. The board recalls, we had condition one broken out by year one, two, and three, and we looked at those projects and then spread them out over a period of time to figure out over the next eight years what that would look like as far as cost wise for the projects. Couple of things of note is, what wasn't included in the referendum work, because the call for new early learning center is the five point one million in capital, that was condition one, year one items, and that's in the FY nineteen number for the early learning center. We also, was in the capital as far as the referendum, was the one, is about one million dollars, and we're working on getting updated estimates for that, for the secure entries at seven schools that were identified to the referendum project as well. So those two line items are now included in the FY nineteen anticipated capital funding need, years two and three carry that out. A couple other items that are worth noting in the overall dollar amount, as you look at that, the sheet you have is going to be a million less, because it does include, the capital plan doesn't include the secure entry, so that's one item. The second item is, when we did the referendum package of all this work, there was an efficiency of doing all the work over a shorter period of time. We backed that number out and put in a three percent increase over time for this work, because obviously if you're spreading costs out and not doing it all at once, you lose those efficiencies. So that's where we get to that total dollar amount. I think that's everything, Jer, maybe the chiller at Wheat North was added, right?
And we backed out the work we did this summer.
And we backed out the work we did this, we are doing this summer. So that basically then gives us a look from FY nineteen through FY twenty-six of what we would have to spend per our capital plan on funding of those projects, so that's about ninety-three million dollars. Underneath that, what we've done is we've gone back to the Sherman Durges formula, we're in the reset year this year, so next year, we go back up, I think, Mr. Matheson mentioned the seven million dollar number, there it is. So we've aligned the Sherman Durges funding levels for the next, over that same period of time, so the board can see what the allocation difference is. And again, Sherman Durges is an allocation set aside for projects, so this, we're basically using the Sherman Durges funding to do capital projects, but we're not ever really catching up on all of the work as you look at it. So just wanted to give this to the board. The finance committee, as I mentioned, reviewed it, the facilities committee reviewed it the next day. We had originally had a five-year plan, we, the finance committee asked for to spread that out over an eight-year period, which if you recall, our condition one, our years one to three, and condition two are four to eight, so we're now kind of in line with those. We do have some condition two items that still remain as watch list, that were included in the referendum work, but obviously things can come up from time to time. So this is just for a purpose of illustration on how that looks.
Bill, before you do that, the, this, this total on this schedule here is ninety-three million, or ninety-two million, we call it.
Correct.
Now, the referendum amount for capital was how much?
Eighty-three point six million.
Okay, so the, and that capital number of the eighty-three did not include Jefferson, that was a separate item?
Correct.
So this ninety-two includes five million for Jefferson?
That's correct.
So that gets us from eighty, gets us down to about eighty-seven versus eighty-three. The difference being those cost increases referred to?
Yes.
The three percent increases and so on. So this basically is the same set of data we looked at when we approved, when we authorized the referendum to be voted upon, I guess, and so it's the same basic set of numbers.
But there's also five point one million dollars in there for capital improvements as opposed to a new building, right? So those, those should be dragged down. So those, those should be dragged out of that number technically. I mean, we've not had any, you know, for six years I've been on this board and I don't think there's ever been anybody supporting, investing more money into Jefferson as opposed to replacing or rebuilding. So we've got 5.1 in the FY19 number under capital funding. So if you extend that out, that 93 million really is less 5 million technically.
Yes, should the board decide not to spend the capital?
In the 80s, for the 90, the 80s, whatever, 87, well, the 83 that was in the original referendum stuff was not, didn't include Jefferson in that.
Correct.
That was a separate item.
Correct.
Okay, so that's why that records that.
I'll kind of restate what I asked in terms of the budget, but in terms of these, both of these numbers, the anticipated capital funding need and the Sherman Durges funding, one of the things I had the opportunity to bring the board is some perspective of what other school districts are doing with their facility improvements. And I think Mr. said it back there, can probably, we talked about this at the facility committee meeting. So 203 spends about $6 million a year out of the 266 million budget. That's probably one of the highest, highest annual expenditures in any school district that I know, certainly would be, other than maybe like CPS, you know, the big school districts, Decatur, Elgin, Rockford, they might spend more annually. Stevenson High School doesn't spend this level of investment in their annual budget. Is there anything you can pick up, all the school districts who might approach this?
I think Flunberg is doing maybe around five, like four, four or five.
So I guess that's just a little reference to, if we're able to get to this level of Sherman Durges, which is going to have some pretty big pain, we're going to be way over, I believe, kind of a comparison of other districts in terms of proportion of our budget that goes towards facility improvements. Just some perspective.
Yes, but you also have to keep in mind that that process was ignored for about 12 years. So we were, we're already in the catch-up environment, so that's why ours is, our commitment is so big, because we have to catch up. So while it's an accurate statement, I think we have to put a little color on the fact that we are where we are because we didn't do the right budgeting for the last 12 years. So we've got this big catch-up number, therefore we're going to be, we're going to be showing a big number and a higher percentage on, on, on even keel, so to speak, I guess.
Yeah, I agree with that, but virtually every other school district in the state of Illinois had the same constraints we did in terms of balancing our budget with CPIs that weren't chugging through. So we're, maybe we're unique, but we're not totally unique because everybody had a lot of similarities.
You know, I agree with that comment in general, but I think that we are where we are. You know, how we got here is an issue that we can't control, number one. Number two, you know, I don't, we're calling the Sherman Durges funding. I said this in the finance committee and I mean it, and I want to say it here too, is we're not funding deferred maintenance here. We're not setting aside money for future building or roofs and so on. All we're doing is catching up right now. So we're funding that deferred maintenance here. We're not setting aside anything as noted by this chart. And that, you know, I mean, in reality, you know, if we continue to do this, at the end of this period, we will have nothing but more deferred maintenance. I mean, you know, we're resetting, but again, we're not setting aside any money at this point because we're deficient to really have any kind of pot for future, future needs. And, and that's what Sherman Durges, the theory does. So I mean, it's, you know, I hate calling it that because that process is, is a funding process and we're just using it to spend and we're not even getting there as noted by this chart. We're, you know, 19 million short in the, or 21 million in the first three years. I mean, that's, you know, that's, you know, I don't know how we're going to fund that. I mean, you know, it's, you know, we got 7 million maybe in fund balance, you know, I don't know, you know, it's a, it's a bigger question. But again, we're going to have deferred maintenance in the end of this, so we're not, that's disappointing, so.
The other item that we looked at was reviewed in the facilities committee and that was relative to the early learning center. And we've been working on fine tuning these scenarios for the early learning center with the base scenario being just doing the capital improvements as Mr. Gambiani mentioned earlier, probably not the best option, but that's obviously a scenario the board can consider. Then we went into the multiple scenarios that we considered relative to the early learning center. The first would be to renovate and expand and we broke it down into an A and A1. And A is really just, is renovating and then expanding the building to meet the, the needs of the program with, which would be probably adding a few classrooms, or the necessary number of classrooms to get, to pull the program within. But it would be, you know, that would be it. It would just be a straight renovation addition. Option A1, which is a different look at it, would be, the addition would be more of the student, student spaces. So we would build new student spaces as part of the addition and use the other part of the building. We could have other early learning center programs in there as well as other options that we could look at District Y to bring back into the older part of the building. So that was A1. Again, accomplish is the same thing, but, but again, it's in, the students' center part of the building would be more of the newer part of the building. So that expansion would be larger than the expansion probably with just adding classrooms. We went to B, there's a scenario B and we've talked to the board about this as well, which would involve an intergovernmental property plan where we would put on in addition to Monroe Middle School, working with, with the Park District as far as using part of Graff Park to add on to the road, the new building, a new early learning center that would be connected to Monroe Middle School with the Park District and looking at the land over by the early learning, current early learning center property. And then we got into option C, which again, this is that we have a C and a C1, and we talked about adding on early learning center as an addition to an elementary, existing elementary school. And we did another review of our properties and really narrowed it down to two schools that potentially could do this. And one would be Sandburg and one would be Wager. And again, these do not come without probably constraints and more involvement of looking at what would be and entail doing that. But those are the two that, that to us look like the only real options that we were to add on at one of those two schools. Then when you get into option C1, that's another option where you do smaller additions onto both of those same properties. However, you would, and then have a north-south program going on where you have your north side early learners going to the Sandburg campus and your south side going to the Wager campus. Finally, the last option, and this probably will, as we talk in the next presentation about, we'll show that this probably is not an option, at least this doesn't appear to be at this point, is we would take over an elementary school and put the early learning center in there and then redistrict those students out to other schools. Obviously, probably not the most attractive of any of these options, but that's a possibility. As we talk about enrollment, we're not able to do that the way things are looking, but that was an option that we left on the table as well.
So just to clarify that last, let's be clear, we're talking about closing an elementary school and sending all those kids to one or multiple other buildings, which will, as you're going to see, will require additions on those buildings and probably some renovations to support that additional population. So there's not a 100% cost, cost savings in that scenario.
Correct. And the committee is in, you know, these are the scenarios the committee laid out and you'll notice off to the right, it says cost TBD. We're working right now with, with lighting architects on, they're doing some high level scenario looks, and it looks at these scenarios and we're in the process of engaging our construction head and firm to take a look at it, but give us some rough estimates of what those costs would be so we could put a cost to all these and bring them back to the board. We anticipate the facilities committee looking at this in early August and then obviously we'll report back out to the board in August as well.
If we were to go to something like a north-south, what would be, we looked at approximately what that would cost us in terms of duplication of staff, travel of staff, I mean, we would need some of that to happen. Do you have any idea?
No, we have, we have not put cost to this. Again, I think that would certainly be a consideration we have to factor into the cost, but we don't for any of these have preliminary costs worked on yet.
Just to clarify that, we're looking at these as just things that have been discussed without any effort to say this makes more sense than the other at this moment.
Correct. You know, again, I think the only, the only option that's on this list that I think both the facilities committee and finance committee that I've heard does not make a lot of sense is the base option, right? The option of simply putting $5 million into the existing building and doing nothing else, that does not make great sense to do that. However, I do want to be clear that if we don't do anything then to improve the facility, we have to do that. We cannot let the current early learning center in its current form go without addressing those facility upgrades at, at some point in time. So I agree fully with any of the board feedback that that option doesn't make sense, but what it does mean, and again, that's the reason why we're kind of into these scenarios, we've got to find one of these options that makes sense. And then we've obviously got to work on developing a plan to fund whatever the improvement is that we've determined to be essential to, to do. So, so I agree completely, the base option doesn't make sense, but, but I just want to say at the onset, if we go down this road and somehow out of this analysis say, well, none of these other options make sense, continuing as we are in the current facility is not possible without beginning to put some money into that facility. So we are, I mean, we're obviously, the court will know, we're beyond decision point on, on, on early learning center and addressing that facility, but, but that's, that's kind of where we are. So you're right, beyond that though, we've not put any level of priority or, or recommendation to this. We just want the board to be aware of the options around which we're now going to put some concepts, work up some potential costs, and then put obviously, you know, pros and cons, or whatever you want to call it, to them so that we can obviously put some analysis into the decision that would make most sense to recommend. And then obviously, finance committee and full board are going to have to deal with the funding aspect of that.
If I remember correctly, I think it was the March meeting, it was presented with a list of, maybe it was like a life safety audit or something that happened and a list of things that had to be accomplished in that building. Should we keep that building going? When do we have to have those done?
I think it's, there's a three to five year window. I think it has to, we were, we adjusted the life safety audits past year and I think most of the items are five years old. I think so, yeah. There may be some sooner, but.
That's not going to be a pressure point on this. I mean, that is out there, but that's not your pressure point on what we need to do here.
Just as an example, what, didn't we just vote to do new flooring? And that cost was how much?
$80,000.
Eighty? We just talked about raises that were 37 and debated that issue. So now we have clearly, you know, cost plus 80,000 more than, you know, if we had had a better plan to move forward with them, you know, and that will build up more as time goes on.
Well, I'm a broken record, but I'd like to add a scenario E here, and I went through this exercise during the referendum. And so I will bring it to the facilities committee again, because I don't believe serious consideration was given. And, and that is to take another look at Hubble and do a hard, hard, hard look, albeit I know it's going to be thinking outside the box, it's going to be painful, and it's, it's very unusual from an education standpoint with a middle school trying to help accommodate elementary needs, so to speak. But I would like to add that where we really have a serious focus as opposed to bringing forward, we need to add 27,000 square feet to that building. That was never my question. My question is how do we repurpose that building, albeit it's not going to be a perfect scenario, but a good asset that we've got sitting there. I would like to see that really given hard consideration as all these should be given consideration. So scenario D, I guess, and now what I'm hearing based on this is that a scenario F, which could be downsizing or creating a smaller footprint for a newer building or a smaller, for a facility to accommodate, and yet then go out to referendum at a much lower price. I know we also are looking for some reports back relative to philanthropic contributions, but we've not seen that report. I, I don't think we give up on that. I just believe we, we get a little more aggressive with regard to size and footprints, so we're really putting a fairer number on that that might be able to be funded by fund balance, small referendum, philanthropic people, but I don't think you give up on that, but I think you have to scale down that footprint as it relates to, and that new building, or another building to replace it. So I think it's great that the facilities committee has identified all these scenarios. I'm sorry, the, yeah, facilities committee. I'd just like to see those two other scenarios explored in a little deeper, in, you know, in a deeper fashion.
I'd like to get some understanding of that collective comment. The, we looked at, at the Hubble issue. Are you, are you, is your position that we should not add on to Hubble and use space that is potentially available there as an alternative?
That's my question.
Okay, so you're not talking about building more space down there? Okay, and did we not look at that? I thought we looked at that quite seriously in the past and, or was it, you know, maybe I need refresh on that. I don't want to spend a lot of time and effort doing scenarios that may not have practicality in that. So that, that troubles me a bit unless I have a better understanding of what you're saying. But if it's not a new building there and you're talking about space, we're going to be talking about enrollment in a minute and that'll help clarify some of those issues. So I just want to make sure we're not, you know, revisiting stuff we've already eliminated so, you know, just to understand as you go forward.
We did look at Hubble. I think the solution we had to come up with was some recapturing of existing classroom space within Hubble and in addition, I recall it's on a southwest corner of the building. And there were some concepts mocked up and a variety of challenges, so if we can go look at it again, that's fine. But I don't think, back when we did that study, you know, prior to the referendum, we couldn't fit that entire early childhood program into the existing Hubble.
Whereas if we did something at Monroe, which is another alternative, which seems more viable to me right now, but from a, just a space point view, is that maybe the cost is more by doing that than repositioning some of the existing space at Hubble. So I, I think that's where I'd have to be convinced that that makes sense, you know, because the Monroe piece we're adding on and, you know, so, you know, if we can, if we could determine Hubble needed no add-on, that would be a different issue. I don't know if we could get that done. So, you know, where Monroe would also be in addition, not using the existing space anyway, correct?
I agree. Certainly, though, I think in, in any facility where you're potentially looking at in addition, that you're going to take a very careful look at if there are some spaces within the building that could either serve a dual purpose, right? So, you know, if you're, if you've got an early learning center attached to an existing building, there, there may be some functions that could have dual purpose across the building, thus reducing the footprint you're needing to, to potentially add on to. But, but again, you know, I think noted in terms of, I think, the interest in, in really looking at that, you know, we certainly did give that a careful analysis the last go around, but, but we will, we will certainly look at what was presented to the facility committee the last time around that, that area issue.
I'd like to ultimately, just as we did with this cost, we reconciled it to what was in the referendum. I'd like to say the same issue on this, issue on the space at, at Hubble. You know, if, if there's something we had before and there's an alternative, I don't want to keep revisiting the same issue. So, you know, if we're going to look at it in a different way, utilizing the existing space within the building, fine, but otherwise I can't, I think we're wasting our time.
Real quick, almost kind of a new guy question, right? So we're talking about Jim's question, which I think is a good question, the repurposing space in Hubble without adding new construction. I'm not certain the facilities committee can figure that out. I'd like to hear from learning, teaching, professional educators on why or why that would, why or why not that would work, not in terms of number of seats, the spaces. To me, that makes no sense. I'd like to hear about, you know, why that program could work in there or not. And I'm not sure how we accomplish that, but that would be, to me, the best piece of data, interestingly, to address Jim's question.
And that, that was part of the analysis last time, but we, again, we will, yeah, we'll gather that.
Just one more quick thing to point out, since it's hard to read up there. C, C1 and D are the scenarios that would enable us to choose to either repurpose or sell the existing jumpers and building above. All the other scenarios would enable that option. So it's C, C1 and D, where we would have that option available to us, which would bring some revenue.
I think there's a maybe to that because I know that if we went with Monroe, you know, I, I think the intent of, I've talked with the Park District personally and, and know, I think the intent of, I've talked with the Park just personally, and, you know, their intent is that, you know, they're not going to buy a lot if they're going to give us this. So, I think that's, you know, a long way from saying we're going to get revenue off that personally.
That's scenario B.
Yeah, okay.
It's less scenario B off of that exact reason.
Yeah, I'm just a new guy. The next item on the agenda is the enrollment and building utilization update.
Yep. So, this is a little bit of the Mr. Farley Show tonight, a number of these reports. But just a little bit of background on this. The board has utilized Dr. John Caserta for a number of years to do enrollment projections and a demographic study of the district. Obviously, we just talked about on the Early Learning Center, there are a couple of options around Early Learning Center that really the future of potential enrollment increase or decline would be very, very important in understanding if, in fact, they are viable options. And then, again, I think on top of that, there was obviously some questions and concerns, criticism during the referendum campaign about building usage. And so, we have worked with Dr. Caserta to update his projections. I do also want to just point out that the, I think, the program needs that drove us to do this also happen to coincide with the time that we should have been updating those enrollment projections. So, we didn't do this just based on the program study. When you do get four to five years out from that demographic study, some of the variables that drove the initial set of projections start to age a bit. And so, it was time to do this anyway. So, Mr. Farley is going to report out. What I will say on the presentation is that you have the highlight version of the enrollment projections. It's a very detailed report that has a lot more information down to, specific to each building with each of the kind of series of projections, which obviously is attached with the board report. But we're going to give you the highlights and then talk a little bit about utilization at the same time.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. And if a board member needs a saving tree, so if anybody needs a printed copy, let me know. But otherwise, it is available online as Dr. Schuler.
How many pages?
Hundred ninety-six. Hundred ninety-six. Anyway, just for some history, it has used Dr. John Caserta. He was a demographer of the University of North Carolina for quite a while now, going back probably into the early 2000s. The most recent study was 2013. So, as Dr. Schuler mentioned, we're right kind of on track there about when you want to update it every three to four years. Dr. Caserta reviews our population and housing dynamics. He does an analysis of our recent enrollment, looks at our enrollment patterns. He gives us our projections, and he does qualify that for early learning, as Dr. Schuler mentioned, it's a little difficult to project it. He keeps it pretty much as a flat trend. He cites that in his report. If you read through it all, you probably saw that. But again, he works closely with the school district, with the local municipalities, getting information from them. So, he takes into account a lot of factors of the cohort survival and all of those demographic study background information that he needs. Just a little district background on the boards aware of this, but our enrollment last year was around 12,788 students. We do have a changing demographic profile. The chart above illustrates that our ethnic racial background has changed quite a bit since 2000, with the largest increase in Hispanic, which has moved from 5.2% to 17.3%. Also, our English learners have nearly tripled over that same time period as well, as well as our low-income count has increased from 8.5% to 26%. So, the demographics, that's one demographic he obviously keeps an eye on. About our district, some of the key points that he points, he measures in here is, he finds that enrollment, especially in suburban Chicago, mirrors what's going on in the housing market and housing trends. So, when we get to the chart, you'll see, you'll see an example of what happened after housing ballooned in the area and then what subsequently happened. But in all, but the last two years, our elementary enrollment has declined. Middle school has declined over a 15-year period, and then our high school has declined over a 11-year period. What has changed over that same time period, and again, ties to some of those demographic issues, is our special program has increased over that same period of time while enrollment has declined. Some other factors that Caserta has looked at, you know, he looks at our 12th graders moving out, and he looks at the kindergarten group coming in. So, our graduating class of 2016, 2017 students graduated from our school district, and 878 kids came in the next year in kindergarten. He also looks at net migration, which includes a lot of the move-in, move-out, and parochial, private-type movement. And for our district, that minus 13 from 15 to 16 is relatively low, all things considered. So, that retention of students change, or that change in retention of students is relatively low. And then, he looks also at special education population, and we've provided some of the percentages from a few of our close benchmarks as far as what our special ed population is compared to those two school districts, Naperville, 203, and Newbury, 204. So, a five-year look, as I mentioned, the kindergarten enrollment, obviously, those incoming students is important. And you can see in 2012, 13, we had hit a high of 973 students, declined after that, and we've held them pretty flat. I think we got the most recent numbers, what were they, 849, I think, right where we're at currently? And we have, once their elementary is open again here in the beginning of August, we'll probably see that number creep up. So, we'll be, we'll be able to say we're relatively flat with our kindergarten enrollment.
Can you go back to?
Sure.
When did we start the whole-day kindergarten program?
How many years ago?
Six.
Six. So, when we added all-day kindergarten, we probably lost classrooms capacity by having a full, one room being utilized full day.
Correct.
Therefore, we had to maybe spill over to another classroom to recapture and update classes. And that, about the same timeframe, probably had a little bit of an impact on the classroom utilization.
Sure. Other interrelated factors that Dr. Caserta takes into account is fertility rates and family size. There has been little change in the incomes of urban families in the last five years. However, the impact of our special population, which may have different fertility rates, is a factor that he takes into account and cites in his report as well. Other factors that he takes into account, obviously, we mentioned housing earlier, turnover of existing housing. He looks at the real estate market, what's happening. We have seen, if you drive around town enough, you know there are a lot of for-sale sites out. I know houses are moving relatively quickly. There may be a lot of folks out there. When the housing market crashed, saw the property, the monthly property, home values were declining. And now, as they come back up, I'm sure there are people that are probably moving to different locations or different types of homes. And I'll mention those in the end here. But also, listed out basically some of the bigger housing projects that either have been completed, are in process, or planned coming up. The bottom two, Loretto and Civic Center down in Warrenville, some of those, first, you know, those are first-floor master-type situations where they're looking for empty nesters or baby boomers that don't want to climb stairs anymore. I'm about there myself. So, so those type, we're seeing those type of homes pop up all over, those type of housing projects. You know, the MNI Home Savanion, some of those folks are catering to that market. And so, we're seeing more and more of that going on. So, we may see that turnover, that type of turnover as well, where folks move into those type of homes that want to stay in our community. But that's a list of some of the ones that are out there right now and the schools they impact. And then, finally, tear-down and rebuilds. The estimate that we got from municipalities was around 12. I thought that number was pretty low for our entire district. Seems like there's more of them going on than that, but that's the estimates we got from the local municipalities. Any good demographer will give you a range. So, we have three different ranges that we look at, A, B, and C. A being less than anticipated, B being kind of what we anticipate, and C being greater than anticipated. And all of those factors we talked about, go into these, you know, go into these, how he does these projections. I think it's worth noting, I mentioned we've used Dr. Caserta for a number of years, while some schools may be in the A, some may be in the C, our overall district enrollment, we have stayed pretty much spot on with the B when you look at our district in its total. So, for our overall enrollment, we'll talk a little bit about that more when we move forward here. So, elementary enrollment, we'll start with the elementary enrollment, and this goes back all the way to 90, 91. We had a good discussion about this in our Facilities Committee, talking about that bridge that you see that hit back in 96, 97. A lot of homes were being built down in the Donata area, up in Klein Creek. We've crossed, a lot of subdivisions were being built out at that time. So, five, six years down the road from when those subdivisions were built, we started to see an influx of kids coming in to our school district. So, you see that, that bridge that kind of bubbled up there in 96, 97 was about a peak, and then it's come down. So, for the, and again, I know it's hard to read, but the right up there is the, with the series C, that's the higher, is anticipated enrollment. The blue is the B, and the A is the green being the lowest. So, if you look at the B, if you focus in on that for elementary, we're going to stay relatively flat based on Dr. Caserta's projections for elementary. Pace can talk about utilization.
I had a difficult break. All right. What you see on the next two slides is Dr. Schuler and I went to all of the elementary schools and met with the principals and walked the buildings, not only to give everyone an idea of, you know, what are the rooms that are there, but also how they're being used. So, this chart shows you how many full-size rooms, this doesn't include little like office space or small group rooms, are at each of our elementary schools. Then, how many are being used for general education, second-grade classrooms, that type of thing. How many are being used for special education classes? That's not resource or pull-out. That's when we have a self-contained special education class there. And then, also, our art and music programs, because you really do need a full-size classroom to be able to offer art and music in the way that we are used to doing that here in District 200. You'll already notice that some of our schools are not using two classrooms for art and music. They are going down and doing some things in the hallway or doing some of those classes on a cart. So, then, if you read all the way across, those are the classrooms, the list that we have there of how many classrooms are being used for our core instruction. And then, the last column is the percent of classrooms, you know, that are being used for those. Sure. The asterisks on here are the special education classrooms there at Madison and at Whittier that we're currently using to house some of the early childhood programs. So, if there was a solution to that, those would be available for other types of use.
Both classrooms like that? You know, like for instance, Madison's got two specialized...
Right. Madison, my understanding is that it's one of those classrooms.
One of each of those.
Correct.
Don't we have something at Johnson too?
We have a Head Start program. We have a Head Start program at Johnson. Head Start is the one program where, as we've looked at the revitalization of an Early Learning Center, I'm not sure we would relocate that Johnson program. There's a geography to the Head Start program that's at Johnson. We could. So, it is possible that we might choose to relocate that Johnson program. At least, that's the one. And working with Joanne and Stephanie Farley and Metropolitan Family Services, I'm not sure that program would relocate.
Yes.
And special education rooms, now, those are not, I'm asking for confirmation, those are not classrooms that have 24, 28 kids. These are smaller.
Correct. Class size is much smaller.
Based on the needs of that program.
Correct. Average is eight to nine students in those special education classrooms. So, then, the next chart. Okay, great. So, then, what this chart is, if you go back to the back, to the first slide, the percent of classrooms available, you'll see that many of our schools were not at 100%. So, then, the next chart shows what those other classrooms are being used for. And one of the things that's kind of happening is schools that are in new construction or more new, such as Longfellow, they have some more small group space for that. But many of the schools that were built prior to that were not suited for having small group instruction. So, that's why some of the changes in this. So, if you look there, PACE is our gifted program, and it lists how many full-size classrooms at each of our schools are using a full-size classroom for PACE. The next column is our special ed resource, and how many are being used for that. In many cases, you would have a couple of resource teachers sharing a classroom. It's not that there's a whole big classroom used for small group instruction for resource. The next column is our English learners, and what type of spaces are used for those. Again, often, when you walk those classrooms, there's two or three, sometimes four EL teachers that are utilizing one classroom, and they've kind of broken it into quadrants so that they have small group space to meet. And then, we have our reading teachers, and how many classrooms those all use. And then, how many in the very far right-hand column, full-size classrooms would be available. For example, Longfellow has an actual vacant classroom that nobody has in. If they get three more fourth graders, however, and we go with our continued use, that classroom disappears if we continue to use our current class-sized capacity. If you look at Whittier, they have a resource teacher using a rather large space, and another resource teacher that's using a rather large space. So, when I walked the building with Chris Levy, I'm like, "Well, you could probably combine those two and put them in one room." So, we have one room available at Whittier for this too.
When did we start, I'm thinking it was maybe 12, 14 years ago that we started having the EL program like we do currently, where they are taught for the most part all day in a classroom. It used to be solely pull-out. I mean, I know what I was teaching, we didn't have EL classrooms.
Right. And it's different at different, at our different buildings. There's now a state provision that says if you have, you know, 45 students in a consecutive grade level that speak the same language, we need to offer instruction in that native language as well as in English. So, at three of our schools right now, only one of them being in elementary, Johnson, we have to have a self-contained, if you will, classroom that we're giving both instruction in Spanish and in English. That changes a little bit depending on the enrollment and what language all of those students are speaking. For most of our schools, it is a pull-out program, like you said. But at Johnson, we do have several classrooms that were required to have the instruction be more of the whole day because we have to do it in Spanish and in English.
I guess what I'm getting at is now we are using 10 and a half classrooms. Where, I mean, 12 years ago, when our enrollment was significantly higher, that's where those 10 and a half classrooms went. Now, because we're using them for EL, am I right in saying that?
Yes. And our number of EL students, as you saw, has increased quite a few. So, there are, there's a need for more teachers, whether it is for a bigger chunk of day or just pull-out. That population has increased too.
Also, as you look at that, of course, I think the other difference is that in most of our buildings, there are multiple teachers. So, you have one space for EL. If you actually go into the room, you'll see a full-size classroom subdivided into two or three teaching stations where simultaneously, so it's not just one teacher with three or four kids. There may be two or three teachers in different quadrants of the room, each with three or four kids. So, I think that's, that's a function as well of just numbers of teachers, and again, not small group space available for each of those teachers.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
And the schools that don't show a full-size PACE room, where are those programs being delivered?
So, for example, at Hawthorne Elementary, they are using the other half of a half-day kindergarten program and using that. We have small group spaces that are sometimes happening where they could look at Weasbrook, where they have half of a classroom. They're splitting it with either a reading teacher or an EL, so there's that half. When it's zero, they may already have a small group room or an office space that they can have that. Some of our elementary students only have five or six PACE students at a grade level, so you're not trying to accommodate a large number of students. Where, at some of our other schools, you would have 21, 22 students at a grade level in PACE, so you need a much larger space.
The, last year, we had a number of parents that were concerned about this, one of the schools, which school was that?
Madison.
Madison. That's what I thought. And they're, you know, basically 88% on this classroom size, and they have three classrooms. I mean, you know, where are we at on that? Is that still an issue or?
As far as the class size pieces, which is different than... As far as the class size pieces, which is different than classroom utilization. And I know it's, I know it's dicey to go through all of that, but this is not number of students in a classroom. This is the number of classrooms that are being used. And some of these classrooms might have a small class size. Some of them might have a really large class size. For example, with the Longfellow piece that I talked about, they've got some higher numbers at fourth grade. If they got more students and we followed our similar procedures, all of a sudden, they would use up one of that space and the class size would be much lower than what our cap is at. So we did address the issue at Madison of that grade level. In fact, they got enough students pretty quickly right after that meeting that we were able to start that process. But throughout all of this, there's a wide range of what class size means. You know, for example, if I am at a school and I have 54 third graders, well, I'm going to divide that into two classes. So I've got 27 and 27. But if I got a couple more students than that and we move that up in class size, then we'd have three classes of much smaller numbers because they aren't in control of like, well, I'm only going to take 60 fifth graders or 60 third graders. I'm going to borrow two from another school. So you have a range of class size.
I guess the underlying question I'm asking is, you know, this is the bulk of our numbers of buildings. And is any data in here with, you know, at this grade level or the, is any space in here sufficient, whether with realignment, redistricting, to handle a Jefferson group or an early learning, it's better word. I mean, you know, because you're talking class size now, which makes more sense to me. So if we have two buildings with 15 people and, I mean, is that even a possibility or do we not see that issue as even possible?
Go ahead. You do not have any class sizes that low, right? So all of your elementary sections, while there is variance, that variance is, you know, maybe between, you know, 23 and 28. You don't have any sections at 15 kids. So to answer your question, I think in brief, no, I don't see available space that would accommodate the totality of an early learning program, not without significant reconsideration of not only boundaries but perhaps configuration of schools. So again, if you went from right now, you have targets within your classes, if you raise those targets to 32 kids, you could probably free up some level of space across those buildings. I still don't believe you would free up enough space to accommodate the needs you have within an early learning center.
Without a massive redistrict.
Without, and I think even with a massive redistrict, I don't believe you're going to have the space to account for that. And again, let's be clear that in all of these numbers, there's some fluctuation year over year. So as you look at, you know, you dig into the Casar projections, our overall elementary enrollment shows a flat trend. Buildings individually will go up and down over time. And so I just think you have to be also very careful when you look at space that if you absolutely match yourself out in terms of available space, then you also have no flexibility, right? I mean, you have no ability to adjust for shifts in that enrollment when you do need to add a section, reduce a section. When a population, you know, goes up, when Joanne determines based on student need that there is another instructional program, we have to add by law. I don't think as a board, you want to put yourself in a spot where you've got absolutely no flexibility to be able to address that. You get some flexibility, I think, built into this now. Not enough to accommodate 16 sections of an early learning program, but I don't believe you've got, you got full capacity for that.
So in conclusion, I guess what I'm trying to say here is that we don't, you know, based on what this data is saying, particularly on these buildings, and I'm troubled a little bit about the, you know, the comment in here about, you know, what our special ed population changes have been and what percentage they are now. And if I understand the wording here, impacted special population is the fertility rates, I mean, that implies to me there's going to be growth potentially in there. Is that what I think he's saying here? So, you know, we're concluding in certain respects that the elementary redistricting, combining builds, isn't going to solve. And in fact, if we look forward to that, if we have a continued growth maybe in that special needs area, that could even become a bigger problem. So I think it seems to me that we are where we are in the elementary and there's not a lot we can do with that. So kind of a conclusion of this or is there some recommendation that you think would be appropriate beyond that?
Yeah. I know you're not going to see a recommendation different than what you just said when we get to the last slide.
Okay. Moving on to middle school, this is a chart you'll see for the middle schools. And again, that bridge that is, was out there in elementary moves a little bit forward with the middle schools. And middle school is, when you get to the series B, which is what we look at, you do see that little rise in middle school in the Bs and that's tied back to that kindergarten group and that bubble group that we've got and I think they're going into fifth grade this year. So you see as that group moves through, you can see the enrollment does increase a little bit in middle school in the series B, then comes back down and levels off with A and C obviously moving somewhat similar but lower. Talking about utilization at the middle school, obviously middle school utilization is a different animal from elementary. Middle school kids like high school kids are moving all the time. Generally, you try and schedule, have a scheduling efficiency of about 85% for middle school efficiency. So what we've got here in the red by every school's name is what their 85% level is and what the current enrollment was as of last year and what that is as a percentage. So as you look at Franklin, they're right at their scheduling efficiency. So they're right at 85% where they want to be. The other three middle schools are obviously lower. See those numbers obviously come up as that enrollment does increase over the next few years' time as the bubble group comes through.
Bill, I just got to ask a question then. So as, and I keep coming back to Hubble. Hubble publicly, 190,000 square feet, built for 1,100 kids. That's probably not an accurate number then, right? If you're telling me utilization for Hubble is 926, why would we have published information that the square footage is 190,000 square feet built for 1,100 kids? That's my kind of, my disconnect.
The same would be true though, Jim, for your other buildings. So you've got, so there, again, you've got, you've got an, it's a true architectural capacity. If you fill every room in the building with as many kids as you could put in that room, you've got an architectural capacity and then you've got an optimal utilization capacity. You start moving beyond 85%, it's going to be very difficult to schedule kids. So if you put 1,100 kids in Hubble, you'd have almost an impossible time scheduling it. That is the true capacity of the building, a true architectural capacity. At 85% utilization though, that's at 926. So you start moving beyond that, it's going to be a challenge. So same is true on the others. So, you know, that 815 at Edison, 702 at Franklin, 982 at Monroe, that's not the true architectural capacity. That's your, going to be your 85% utilization number.
Question. Just in terms of public perception, then architectural capacity in the middle school is a useless statistic. You would never put a child in every seat in every classroom in that kind of setting.
You can't schedule one.
Right. So I'm just, I'm pointing out that we've had problems with that perception across the community and maybe that's something that really needs to be explained because it's pointless if that's not how the building is used, then why are we even using that number? Because I, I just coming to an understanding of that myself and I'm sure Hubble has no idea.
And by looking at this, Monroe has a larger capacity than Hubble. And that I didn't realize.
One more question. Are we watching the numbers at Washington? I'm looking at Franklin's utilization being so high. I asked the school that was split and then I'm looking at Monroe that's at 67. Do we watch, are the numbers at Washington trending up or trending down?
Yeah, we certainly have watched that. So in the, certainly in the enrollment committee, that's been a split that we've been very, very careful to watch. It's still holding pretty good. So I think when you made the adjustment that you made, gosh, I don't know how many years ago that was, to split, it has been, that's held pretty true to expected. So you've, again, you're still, you're right at an 85% number at Franklin, but you were beyond that at the point that you made that split and moved kids off and that's held pretty steady.
I guess what I'm saying is we're splitting it. Does that still make sense to be splitting it or should they be all going to Monroe because we're sitting at our capacity per utilization at Franklin? I mean, I'm watching that. That's all I'm asking.